I want to call the meeting to order. Thank you for being with us. This is the regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting. It is convened on July 23, 2013. Having called the meeting to order, we are duly assembled and I'd like to ask Councilman Riley Bettis, if he would, to pronounce our invocation to start our meeting, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray, please. Heavenly Father, as we continually strive to make Greer the best place to be, help us to allow, always serve, our fellow citizens in an open and honest process that includes conversation and compromise where needed, but without compromise of our core beliefs and convictions. Help us to remember that our government at all levels is based on your unambiguous laws, which are the very foundation of this country, and serve as our absolute guide regardless of secular agendas. Help all elected officials and public servants at all levels of government to fulfill their obligations and defend our laws regardless of their political preference. And help us to remember that governing must be a democratic exercise, not an autocratic decree. Help us to always be mindful of the trust placed in us by our fellow citizens and guide us in all of our decisions. In his name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that then, we'll move the minutes of the council meeting from July the 9th. Do I hear a motion as they be received?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing number, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, you have your departmental reports in front of you there and as always, administrator will be glad to help you as those are department heads. And Mr. Seifert is with us to give us another view and details of our financial report. Mr. Seifert?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're pleased to bring to you the June 30, 2013 month, the financial report. At that time, we have year-to-date revenue of $18,841,618 with year-to-date expenditures of $17,397,775. That is 4% under budget on the expense side. Those two amounts together right now have us at $1,405,717 of revenue over expenditures. Of course, that is prior to the audit and finalizing all the audit adjustments, but right now, we're anticipating that number to come in somewhere in the range of $1.3 million revenue over expenditures. Referencing the dashboards, we have a positive variance on the revenue benchmark of $773,359 and a positive variance on the expenditure benchmark of $670,424. Again, that total overall variance is $1,443,783. And then our end in cash balance at June 30, it's $5,407,521. As always, we would have to entertain any questions you might have.
Council, question or comments for Mr. Seifert?
Thank you for that link. That works a lot better. I appreciate it.
Glad to go for you.
No problem.
Others?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the update.
As is my pleasure from time to time, we get to take an opportunity to recognize our employees, those that have reached milestones in terms of their employment, and we'd like to take this opportunity to recognize them for their work and their endeavors with the city and to give them a small token of our appreciation as they serve the city. And so tonight, we want to do that by form of resolution. This is a resolution recognizing and commending the City of Greer employees. Whereas the City of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, and whereas Eric Herman has served in the Public Services Department for five years, Diane Moore has served in the Public Services Department for 15 years, Tommy Freeman has served in the Building and Developing Standards Department for 15 years, Chris Varner has served in the Police Department for 20 years, and Mary Jane Miller has served in the Police Department for 25 years. Whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner now, it therefore resolves that the City Council of Greer, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for their distinguished and dedicated service, which they have performed. It be it further resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and a personal day off with pay approved this, the 23rd day of July 2013. So, if you would, Eric Herman, would you come forward, please, sir? If you'll just stay up here with us for just a minute? Diane Moore?
Diane?
Tommy Freeman?
Thank you, sir.
Chris Varner?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mary Miller?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You'll join me in hearing this folks round the wall?
I know we had some, or had some family members with us and see some department heads out there and thank you all for being here as well, too. We appreciate the sacrifices that your spouses and family members make as they serve the city, often knowing that those hours can be unusual and difficult and require certainly adjustment on the family's behalf. And as we have been reminded of that, certainly, we're mindful of the sacrifice that our police and fire and other folks make from time to time. We really don't think as much about the fact that after we've had a severe wind or rain storm, that our folks in public services are often out late at night and often in dangerous conditions as well, too. And for all of our departments, we thank you for the time that you invest and the overtime that you invest. And for those of you that have family members here, to the family members, thank you very much for sharing your family member with us. With that then, we'll move to the administrator's report. Mr. Driggers?
Thank you, sir. Members of council, I'm pleased to report, my report is brief. There's only a couple of items that I may draw to your attention. One is to really recognize that we had a successful opportunity last week during the Municipal Association of South Carolina's annual meeting in Greenville to host 100-plus guests here in our community as part of that program. It was extremely well received. I know many of you received comments from your colleagues from around the state, but we were certainly glad to have those folks in our community. They spent some time in Travelers Rest during the morning, but spent mid-morning through midday with us here in Greer. We were able to stay on schedule and we had a very full day for them here. But again, we are anticipating that we will be hosting a number of municipalities back here in our community. Many have already contacted us and have asked us for additional information on the information that they've received while they were here. They've asked for opportunities to come by and tour our facility and they've asked us to provide them with some data on some of the things that they've seen in our community as well. So it was a wonderful opportunity for us to share our community with a number of communities from around the state, and we were glad to be able to participate in that. Our Moonlight Movies, Movies in the Park, will continue. Our last event for an outdoor event is this Thursday evening, and then we'll be moving inside for the remaining time down at the Cannon Center. But it has been, weather permitting, it has been a successful event for us on Thursday evening, drawing very large crowds. And then also, weather allowed us to do our first Toons in the Park last Friday evening, and we certainly are anticipating good weather to allow us to do that again this week. Large, large turnout for that. I was very, very pleased. I was kind of following it on one of our media sources while we were over at the convention last week, and I was extremely pleased to see the large crowd, the turnout that we had here in City Park for that event last Friday evening, and we're certainly looking for as large, if not larger, this evening. I do have two items that I would like to ask your consideration of in executive session. One is an update to an economic development matter and one is an update to a legal or some additional information concerning a legal request that you made with some information from our city attorney. There may be other items that council may wish to entertain, but those would be the items that I would like to ask for your consideration in executive session. That would conclude my report. If there's any questions, we're glad to be able to answer those. Several members of our staff are present with us this evening as well, but we're glad to do that here this evening. Or as always, we're glad to entertain questions, comments that you may have by telephone, in person, or by email communication as well. We hope to keep you as informed with the information that you are requesting for us at all times. Thank you.
Mr. Driggers, I think you've been questioned several times from myself and some other council people about the repairs to some CPW's utilities and how it's affecting our roadways.
Yes, sir.
And I believe you had a meeting with CPW. If any resolution come from that?
I was very, very pleased with that meeting. Had the opportunity to meet with the general manager and also the engineer from CPW. Myself, Don Holloman, our city engineer, and Skipper Burns, our director of our Roads Division, our Public Services Division. It was a very productive meeting. We had an opportunity to look where there are some concerns, particularly in the area around Miller Street that we were trying to look at. We learned a little more about what they were doing in that area, and I think what we really resolved from that meeting is that there are opportunities for us to better communicate, both from us to them about what we are doing and when we're doing things, and then also from them to us about the work that they have in progress. Particularly relative to that example, what we learned is that they are using a technique where they are replacing old pipe, old sewer pipe in the area. They typically will make a cut, they'll go in, they're inserting pipe inside the old pipe, they install that pipe, and then there's a process where they actually disintegrate or explode that old pipe, and then the new pipe is in place. While you're seeing smaller patches and repairs throughout the street, when we reviewed the contract, what we actually see is that they will come back and they will make larger repairs that cover that entire area. So you won't have small patch repairs throughout the area. Those are temporary repairs until the work is completed in that area, and then they will come in and complete that entire project. Now, we're not anticipating that that'll be a full resurfacing in that area, but it will certainly be different and to a much higher standard than what you're seeing out there today. Those are temporary repairs. We also had a great opportunity to discuss where there are openings to the street area, how those repairs were made, how we monitor subcontractors that would be coming in to do that work as well. So again, I think it was very productive. I think we opened up some really good communications between us and them and vice versa to address some of those issues and concerns, but they were extremely open and receptive because ultimately, they would like for the quality of that repair to be the same standard that we're looking for as well. And I fully expect that we'll see great improvement as we continue to move forward.
So are we going to, say, in the future, Mr. Holloman has this list of roads, is he gonna turn that over to CPW and say, "This is what we're gonna do, you got any pipes you need to dig up"?
Well, absolutely. One of the things that we talked about is that the road list for us typically, as we're adding roads, it's a couple of years down the road before they work their way up to the top of the list. And as we start to identify those and they start to make their way, now, of course, something can happen to push somebody up the list for some reason, but typically, we've got a pretty far outlook of what's taking place with that. Yes, our role is to make sure that we're indicating to them of where we plan to do complete resurfacing of streets. Now, where there's infrastructure improvements that need to be made, if there's a plan in their overall infrastructure plan, if they plan to replace pipe or make upgrades, that's a perfect opportunity to do that. But one of the things that we recognize, and we've had this happen, you can take the best system in the world, you can do a new resurfacing, and tomorrow night, there can be a water leak under that road. And when there's a leak under that street, there could be a gas line, there could be a water line, there could be a sewer line, there could be an underground electric utility. Anywhere that those utilities are located, if there's a failure to that system in any regard, if it's underground, it is going to require that we excavate, make the repair. And what we believe is that we can do a better job of communicating to them where we are planning to do full street resurfacing, and we also believe, and they've communicated with us, that they believe that there's an opportunity that when repairs are necessary to be made, that the quality of those repairs can be improved.
So are we actually putting together a procedure? Like you say, we all realize that if you've got a system, you've got to maintain it, and nobody denies that, and of course, we wanted to do that. But sometimes, I've noticed a, I guess, I'm assuming it was a repair, it was on a particular street, that it appears that everything is final, they have resurfaced, and the resurfacing is not level with the existing plane of the road.
Right.
Are we going to have some sort of procedure in place to where public service or engineering is notified and that we've had to make this repair, or we're making this street cut for whatever reason, and we are getting ready to backfill and pave the street? Are we gonna go out and look at it, or, I mean, is there that kind of procedure in place?
Well, the discussion that we had at this point wasn't that every time that CPW is required to make a repair to the street, that in every instance, that we would go out and do an inspection of that work. What we did indicate is that there are certainly opportunities that there can be, by procedure, there can be a standard that is established of what that repair should be. What we find in most cases where we get an uneven area is because of compaction. And what our city engineer recommended, and I certainly concur with, and there seem to be general concurrence with CPW as well, is that there could be the opportunity that the contractor or the subcontractor really is held accountable and responsible for that repair, and they're held responsible for some length of the life of that repair. Now, we have to be reasonable in what that should be, but by all means, when a repair is made, it should be a level, uniform repair. Again, we don't believe at this point that it's necessary that every time that's, every time a repair is made, that there needs to be a formal inspection process, but we could get to that point if we're not seeing improvement. CPW certainly recognizes and acknowledges that, you know, the process of going into the public right-of-way and making those cuts is a privilege that is granted in those public rights-of-ways. They're a partner of ours, we certainly want to expedite their process when they need to make that cut. We certainly want them to be able to do that in a timely manner. Sometimes, that's at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, and we don't necessarily want to delay that process by a permit-type situation, but there certainly is the ability for us to be able to know where those have occurred, and then us to be able, through the general course of our duties, being able to go by and take a look at that and inspect and make sure that it's being done to the standard that we have agreed to, by the standard, by that which would be an engineering standard of the quality of that work.
Now, is our engineering department going to develop a standard for the refilling of a trench, for instance, and the compaction and things? Because many times, if we're not, if it's not done as a permitting process, which I don't think that we should, especially, well, not now at least, but if we're doing a street view after the fact, all we can see is that it's been repaired to the same level as the existing roadway. But then, in four weeks, we start to see some failure, and the only way we have to determine if it's done correctly is maybe a core sample. And, you know, if it's, if you take a core sample and you look at it, and however our engineers can analyze it, and if it's done to our specifications, okay, something else may be going on, but it relieves the responsibility of that subcontractor who did it to our specifications. But if it's not, then we, you have something to go back on and say, "This is the way it should have been done." It's what's called a process.
I think specifically to your question is that, yes, that specification would be established and communicated, that this is, this is how much soil, how thick the soil should be, how it should be compacted, what is the maximum, the minimum, what the expectation would be for that surface, whether that's concrete or asphalt. So yes, those specifications would be outlined, identified, communicated in writing, and then we would hold both CPW and through them to their subcontractors responsible for the quality of that repair. Yes, sir. And again, I do want to emphasize that CPW, when we met with them, their representatives, they were extremely cooperative with us in recognizing that there was much room for improvement and that we needed to establish what those processes should be and work together to help make that happen.
Good.
Extremely cooperative.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Driggers, if you would, refresh my memory, please. In executive session, we had, was it two legal matters?
One economic development, one legal.
Excuse me. Thank you. With that then, we'll move to appointments of boards and commissions. We have carried over on a couple of different occasions, the Airport and Environment Commission. We have nominations to be made by both the Greenville County side and the Spartanburg County side for folks in that regard. Do I hear nominations from the floor in regards to the Airport and Environment Planning Commission?
I want to make one for Spartanburg County Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Miles Nathan has agreed to serve on the Airport and Environment Committee. I didn't get the form filled out for him, so I'll definitely get that from him. He currently works at Langston Black, the Greer location, and he oversees the commercial projects there. He's knowledgeable about the land acquisitions. And we went through the information about the Airport and Environment Committee, and he's agreed to serve for that, so I want to make a nomination for Miles Nathan.
I'll second Miles. Have a motion and a second. Any further questions in regards to nomination for the Airport and Environment Planning Commission? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Mayor, for the Greenville opening, I'd like to nominate Andy Burley. I think everyone has a sheet, a copy of the sheet in front of them. He is highly qualified in the field of airplanes, and I believe he'll do a wonderful job.
Have a motion. I have a second. Other discussion, questions in regards to Mr. Burley's nomination? Hearing number, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 12-2013, an ordinance to amend the City of Greer Code of Ordinances, Chapter 90, Utilities, Article 2, Sewer Use and Pretreatment Attachment B and Attachment D. I believe we have Don Milner here this evening with us. If not, I'm doing? Okay. And I see others from CPW with us as well, too. And thank you all for being with us, Nick, and others that have come this evening. Shall y'all give us an update in terms of where we are in regards to the ordinance and to the efforts that y'all have put forth in the last month or six weeks or so, as you've moved to make sure that the folks understand this and as we move forward? Would either Mr. Stegall or Mr. Milner, either one, wish to address this issue? Podium's yours.
Well, since the last time we were here, we have held a public forum to discuss the changes to Greer's policy. And we also have removed the quarterly reporting requirement from that. And I believe those were the two main items that you had requested that we take a look at. So I believe we've accomplished what we were requested to do at this point.
Thank you for the update. Questions of Mr. Milner?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your work in that regard.
Enter date a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second in regards to ordinance 12-2013. Further discussion? Hearing number, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, I believe that catches us up on boards and commissions for the time being. Thank you for your work in that regard. With that then, we'll move to items involved business. First item involved business, this is the second and final reading of Annexation Ordinance 11-2013. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property entered by Dean and Sherinda Niskens located at 130 Mockingbird Lane by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R15 for said property. Mr. Basin joins us this evening with his bow tie, and thank you for being with us, sir.
Thank you. Mayor and council, this came to you back in March for first reading. The reason for the hold and delay on this was that Mr. Niskens was building a single-family residence on this lot, and the construction period was started in the county, and we let that process continue all the way through till he got his certificate of occupancy in agreement with Mr. Niskens, and also that at that time, he would finalize the annexation and the permits would be closed out with the county before coming into the city. He has informed us that he has in fact obtained that certificate of occupancy and is ready to become a full-fledged citizen in regards to that. There was a public hearing held on March 18th. By the Planning Commission, no one spoke in favor or in opposition to the request at that time.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Since the last time we were here, we have held a public forum to discuss the changes to Greer's policy. And we also have removed the quarterly reporting requirement from that. And I believe those were the two main items that you had requested that we take a look at. So I believe we've accomplished what we were requested to do at this point.
Thank you for the update. Questions of Mr. Milner?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your work in that regard.
Enter date a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second in regards to ordinance 12-2013. Further discussion? Hearing number, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2013, an ordinance authorizing the City of Greer, South Carolina, to terminate the city's tax increment financing district known as Chick Springs Road redevelopment project area and other matters related thereto. Comes with no new information or updates. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Questions? Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2013, an ordinance authorizing the City of Greer, South Carolina, to terminate the city's tax increment financing district known as Hampton Road redevelopment project area and other matters related thereto. Again, comes with no new information or updates. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Questions? Comments? Hearing number, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2013, an ordinance authorizing the City of Greer, South Carolina, to terminate the city's tax increment financing district known as Hampton Road redevelopment project area and other matters related thereto. Again, comes with no new information or updates. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Questions? Comments? Hearing number, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
I have a motion and a second in regards to ordinance 12-2013. Further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. We have before us the second and final reading of ordinance 24-2013, an ordinance authorizing the City of Greer, South Carolina, to terminate the city's tax increment financing district known as Chick Springs Road Redevelopment Project Area and other matters related thereto. Comes with a second reading, no additional update or new information in regards to that. I'll entertain a motion to receive?
Same move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Questions? Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2013, an ordinance authorizing the City of Greer, South Carolina, to terminate the city's tax increment financing district known as Hampton Road Redevelopment Project Area and other matters related thereto. Again, comes with no new information or updates. Do I hear a motion to receive?
It's a motion. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. In that same vein, we have an ordinance authorizing the City of Greer, South Carolina, to establish a fund for the operation, maintenance, and improvement of Highway 29 corridor located in the city and other matters related thereto. This is ordinance number 26, 2013. Again, comes as a matter of discussion from the last meeting, our second reading in this regard. I'll entertain a motion to receive?
Same move. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Floor's open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, we'll now move to items of new business, the first of which is ordinance 27-2013. This is an ordinance authorizing the financing of the improvement, extension, and enlargement of the combined utility system of the City of Greer, South Carolina, through the borrowing by the city of not exceeding $3.5 million from the South Carolina Public Service Authority, authorizing the execution and delivery of an intergovernmental loan agreement between the City of Greer and the South Carolina Public Service Authority, and a promissory note from the City of Greer to the South Carolina Public Service Authority in connection therewith and other matters relating thereto. We'll require action, and it looks like Chuck Reynolds is joining us this evening to help us with a better and more thorough understanding of ordinance number 27-2013. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Oh, thank you very much, and I appreciate y'all having to be here tonight. And as you know, I took 62 pages plus, but condensed it down before we were. Pretty much what CPW is doing, we're seeking to enter into a loan agreement with the South Carolina Public Service Authority, also known as the Sandy Cooper Power Leash Team. And what we're doing is, we're going to build a substation, and we need a substation that be located out between Burness and Highway 101 area. This substation is going to serve a mix of industrial, commercial, and residential customers, and it's also going to provide some increased reliability to our existing customers on that end of the circus out that way. It also, some of the customers that are affected are the South Carolina ports and some of the warehousing that's being built out in that area, so pretty important for us. The loan, as the mayor said, is not to exceed $3.5 million for the substation. It is a, it's an interest-bearing note in the last five years, it's a 10-year note. Years 1 through 5 are 0% interest, years 6 through 10 will be interest rate adjusted each year at the 10-year Treasury. It is the intention of CPW to pay this off in the first five years, there'll be no interest accrued on this. And also, note here is that it is paid by the revenues of CPW, and it's considerably junior, it's warranted to all other debt that's been issued, so this is a good loan that's for economic development purposes through Sandy Cooper. So we think this is a great thing, and ask for your approval for this.
Reynolds, if you'll stay with us just a moment, I'll entertain a motion to receive? Same move.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Floor's open for discussion or questions. Mr. Reynolds? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 28-2013, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Eric and Nina Windhizer located at 1311 South Highway 14 from OD to C2. Mr. Pace, you've got information for us in that regard, sir?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, we did have a public hearing on this July 15th before the Planning Commission. Some discussion was held as to the regards of the construction of a new restaurant proposed for this location. This location is the, it appears to be a residential structure, but it's where the nationwide insurance office is there on Highway 14 just before, or just beyond the McDonald's hotspot. There would be construction of a new subway constructed on that site. We've had some contacts with the builder in regards to that and the owner, or future owner, of that property, and the Planning Commission, again, no one's in favor or in opposition to the request, and they unanimously approve recommending the zoning change to C2.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion that, ordinance number 28-2013, I'll entertain a motion if you receive? Same move. Have a motion in a second. Have a motion in a second in that regard. Questions of Mr. Pace first, please. Is that building going to be demolished and new structure are there?
It will be removed in some manner, I'm not sure exactly how that will happen, whether it's demolished or moved. Yes, sir, there will be new construction for this site.
Is it the same subway as the one that's across the street now?
It is.
Oh, okay.
They're leasing, they're leasing that property currently, and they wish to go into the owner-occupied business of the business here in the city, and we strongly encourage that.
Others? Would the owners of the property or representatives of the owners of the property wish to address council in any regard this evening?
Unless you have any questions.
Questions of those folks? Thank you for being with us this evening. Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. We'll move to item C, which is the first and final reading of Resolution Number 8-2013, a resolution to accept Hendrix Business Park Streets, namely Manatee Court into the seat of Greer Street System. Mr. Holloman will bring us information in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Hendrix Business Park is a small development just off Old Wood Road, just before you get to BMW site down there. Been there for a number of years, one of those that was developed, but for whatever reason, the owner never came in and made the request or brought us information regarding its construction as it was done or as it was finished in order to take this road into the system. It's about 950 feet long, it's in pretty good shape. We have, since this came up this time, we've gotten records for what was constructed. We've got a new plat there. The owner is, I think, trying to sell one of the lots on there that would bring some more business into that area. So we think that the road is a good one to take in, it's in pretty good shape, he's given us the information that we need, and we'd like to have your input along that.
Questions, Mr. Holloman?
Which street is it? I tried to find it. I only wanted to come up with...
Manatee Court, if you're going down 101 up towards the airport, Old Wood Road, it's one of those kind of swerves in off of, it's right on the edge of the roadway. You'll see the, there's a couple of businesses on either side of it, one relating to wood structures, and the Hendrix Development is an air conditioning building on one side. He was going to sell one of the lots, and everyone just speaks to be taking over this place.
Only road I saw was one that had bricks or something on it.
It doesn't really stand out as a business park, and it's not that large, but it is right there at that part of Old Wood Road. And he did give us some additional right-of-way on Old Wood Road so that we had a clean right-of-way back in off of 101 for that.
Fun tan motion, Resolution 8-2013, big reception?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further questions or discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. We'll have the first and final reading of Resolution Number 10-2013. This is a resolution authorizing a lease purchase agreement, Series 2013, in the principal amount not exceeding $1.200,212, excuse me, $1,212,425 relating to the financing of various items of equipment for municipal purchases, purposes, authorizing the execution and delivery of various documents, including the lease agreement, and other matters related thereto. Mr. Saif?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This resolution authorizes the city to move into the lease purchase agreement for items approved through the budget process in the capital equipment fund for fiscal year 2014, and we are here to answer any questions in the house.
Before we do that, I'll entertain a motion to receive?
Same move. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Floor's open for discussion or questions.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.